No, seventeen?
Yeah.
That's way too bad.
That was brilliant.
You're all special.
Yeah, that's the, that's my opinion.
Oh, no.
It's pretty trashy.
Well, that was, that's my thought.
He's not real.
At the airport, the work was so significant now for secular. And he had a couple of separate.
Yes, Bill, your boss is down there. Your boss is down there. Fifteen seconds.
I'm on it. I'm on it. Open it all.
Called meeting order with what, please?
Flag allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with a little bit of housekeeping. Any, uh, has everybody seen the minutes from the meeting of July the nineteenth? So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
There was, there was one small question.
He's gonna be like this all night, remember?
No, it was, I don't remember the exact paragraph, but it said the, somebody came in front of the board of commissioners, actually came in front of the council.
Thank you.
I make most improvement with this all.
Pushed by Todd, second by Kay, all the favors, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Close.
Alright, you don't have to sign it, I guess.
Okay, we're gonna start the public hearings for the, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two budgets. Open the public hearing for the Stark County budget. Is there any input from the crowd? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the, for Stark County.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Todd, second.
Okay.
Second by Kay, all the favors, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing for the North Judson Sam Pierce School Corporation. Is there any discussion from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for North Judson Sam Pierce School. Do you make it again, Todd?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing for North Judson.
Got a motion from Todd, second.
Second.
Second from Howard, all those in favor, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Close. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for the Coontz Lake Conservancy District. Is there any input from the public on that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Coontz Lake Conservancy.
So moved.
Where'd you get that?
Yes.
All those in favor, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Close. Motion carries. Open the public hearing for the Stark County Airport. I know there's some input from Todd.
Well, I just.
That's you, Charlie, isn't it?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Question, huh?
Sure can.
I was just curious about the occupancy of the airport. We'll follow up. As far as what, what's the, what is the ratio between Stark County residents and out of the county? You know?
Uh, that I don't have.
Okay.
Cause we track occupancy.
Okay.
But I can say that this, that anybody from Stark County wants a place gets a place.
Okay. The other question I had was, uh, your fuel out there.
Yep.
Your fuel is quite a bit cheaper than anybody else.
Yep.
And I know that that fuel can be raised, that can be offset, can be used as an offset to your budget. I'm just curious why it's so cheap compared to all the other airports?
Because Stark County is a very small community, not a lot of amenities to attract people in, in flight. So if we put our fuel, as we had it one day, the same price as everybody else, nobody landed, nobody came in. We dropped the fuel and we got a lot of traffic. And one of the, uh, we got two, uh, corporate hangers this past year built. Uh, and one of them was a result of the traffic because of that.
Right.
So that's why it is, we're still making money.
Okay. I just know.
And it, it still goes up, it still goes into the, the budget.
Yeah, I looked at all the surrounding airports and, and there was quite a discrepancy and I was just curious about the reason why.
We, we, we all looked at that monthly and we've been running pretty close to.
Why look at today?
For, so, yeah, yeah, so it was spread to be, and part of it is dependent upon when the loaded.
Right. Okay. That's, that's really the only question I had, Tom.
Yeah.
Is there any other public input about the airport budget? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Kay, second, second by Don, all those in favor, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Close. Open the public hearing for Stark County Solid Waste. Hello, Dave.
Hello, sir.
Is there any public input from the Stark County, about Stark County Solid Waste budget for twenty twenty-two?
Carrie's on, and I'm on the board too, there's, I don't think there should be a problem.
She said the only reason that I talked to her today, the only reason it went up was because of the TV recycling.
TV recycling, they had some more cameras out there, so, other than that, they're nice.
Why doesn't he wear suits here?
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion by Todd, second.
Second.
Second by Howard, all those in favor, sing goodbye.
Bye.
Close. Stark County.
Yeah, that's supposed to be Stark County Economic Development Foundation, not the SECDF.
Lisa.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me this evening. A couple of things, I was at the conference meeting this morning, second meeting, to talk a little bit about our board makeup. What we're doing to try and be compliant with the contract with the county and getting, you know. I discussed with them, um, our current board makeup, how we believe that the group of folks that we have on our board is important because of their expertise in different areas. And, uh, so they asked me to come back today just to answer any questions they may have had. Um, realizing that we have reduced our number of board members from twenty-eight down to twenty-three. Um, we anticipate at least two to three more, um, at the end of the year, what terms expire. Uh, for at-large members that will be leaving the board, Ron, who is on our board, because he is the skill. Board president and current interim director through the end of the year will also be off of our board and the skill board at the end of the year. So we feel, um, and at the beginning of the year, we kind of said, okay, plan commission folks have a big coming, Hamlet Town Council has a big coming. Let's just go ahead and eliminate those positions, but in the meantime, I have been to a plan commission meeting and to a Hamlet Town meeting. And they really feel that they should be a part of our board as well, they're representative members. So the commissioners did not see a problem, uh, with us including them on our board next year. So we're, we're reducing numbers through attrition, uh, through, I, I had one board member who was not in compliance with the tenants, who chose to resign very politely because of his busy schedule. So, um, we're doing things to address our, uh, number of board members, but we do feel the folks that we have on our board are important to our board, uh, because of their different expertise. The only recommendation from the commissioners this morning was to, you know, if we can further reduce our numbers, look at our at-large members and see where we can, um. Continue to cut in that area, they didn't, you know, say you have to do this, um, immediately, but they just asked that if, as we. Try and reduce our number of board members, that we do look at our at-large members first. They felt, I felt that our representative members are important to our board and many of our at-large people are too. I don't want to lose any of our members, but, um, we understand, um, the recommendation by the commissioners and we're going to towards that. Also, at the last, uh, commissioners meeting, um, I went over a few of the reasons why skill and the foundation are separate. And if there's other things that they would recommend we do to let me know, they were satisfied with my explanation. Um, and the fact that we are a, the foundation is a five oh one C six, skill is a five oh one C three, they have a board, we have a board. We're separating a lot of weight, uh, Ron's position with the foundation is no longer, he has agreed to stay on as skill interim director through the end of the year. And then he said he is absolutely done. Um, so he's helping out the interim until they figure out what they're going to do as far as a skilled director, uh, starting the first of next year. So, um, then I guess my main reason, and you guys are all talking budgets tonight, I was suggested, um, that I approached the council. Just to say, you know, this is what we're doing as you're considering, um, our contract for next year, hopefully you're considering our contract for next year. Um, just to kind of go over a couple of things that we think would justify, you know, continuing contracts with the county. Uh, so one of the things that we are trying to do is seek funding through different avenues, besides through the county, the city, the town of North Judson. Um, we're working with that to, we're gonna come up with a plan and we're going to, uh, it'll, it'll be a pitch ourselves to try and go out into the community. In different ways to try and secure funding, um, maybe through the industry. Um, I, I actually spoke to the, uh, administrative assistant at Fulton County Economic Development today. Who is, uh, Fulton County is very similar to us, ninety percent of their funding comes from, um, the city of Rochester and the county of Folsom. And that's divided equally between Rochester and Fulton County. So I have reached out to other Lidos to see how their funding is set up to try and get some ideas from others on, um, ways we can, um. Try and get other sources of funding. One of the disadvantages we have in being a five oh one C six versus a five oh one C three. Is some of the opportunities for grants aren't as available to five oh one C sixes as they are to C threes. So we're, we're going to look at different ways that we can go out and, uh, try and find ways to sustain ourselves, uh, beyond what the county and the city and the council do. But realizing that we're not the only Lido that is funded, you know, eighty to ninety percent by local government, even though we're not a government office. So, um, some of the things to help justify, hopefully, future funding in the last five years. Investment of over thirty-one million dollars in expansions by traffic control specialist J W Hicks and Norton Packaging. And over three hundred seventy jobs created and retained as a result of those expansions. Our rural opportunity zone initiative that we're working on is, um, to create a marketing prospectus. To attract outside private investors looking at industrial and housing developments in the opportunity zone with a focus on the Hamlet area due to its proximity to US thirty. Um, I did attend a Hamlet Town Council meeting and they are currently, uh, offering incentives for developers who are, um, putting up housing in Hamlet. And they have offered us to, uh, to use those same incentives in our prospectus that we will be, um, marketing to private investors. And so the goal of that rural opportunity zone is to market, um, industrial industry on the south side of US thirty, all the way from thirty-five to, uh, twenty-three. Because there's opportunities all the way down to Norton, even though we don't have infrastructure there, we still, um, are marketing that. We also have been submitting the Cisco site, the toll building and other available sites, the fifty-three acres in the Knox Industrial Park, almost weekly, um. For I E E C projects that are coming down the pipe every single day, almost it seems like. Uh, but we are currently in the, well, advanced stages of the first solar project. Um, we had the solar developers in two days, uh, two weeks ago, doing their planning, they attended a plan commission meeting last week and all went well there. They will be back in mid-September for another planning meeting, that they expect to break ground and have an official groundbreaking the first week in October. Um, and that project is in the neighborhood of two hundred fifty million dollars. Uh, they expect to be up and running by, uh, June or July of twenty twenty-three. Like I said, we're continuing to market the former Cisco site as well as all other available sites and buildings in Stark County, currently working with two prospects interested in locating Stark County. The one I'm having a difficult time with, they want a building with, uh, twenty-five foot ceilings, which we just do not have. So that's been a struggle. Um, I have been doing business retention and expansion business with the I E E C, through our local manufacturers, to make sure that we're meeting their needs and assisting as needed in expansions. And, uh, the big problem right now is the number of local jobs and.
How are we doing on that, Lisa?
Well, um, it's still an issue.
Is it still as bad?
I, I don't.
Is it getting better?
I have not surveyed them recently, but I, I will follow up and in fact, I have been in communication with all the manufacturers because we do have manufacturer's day coming up. So, uh, I'm trying to get a feel, I will tell you that I'm not gonna have a real good response from manufacturers for manufacturer's day. And I believe that it's because they just don't have the resources to send people to, um, to attend. But I'm, we're gonna see what we can do about that and Janice may be able to attest to that. I think it's getting a lot better.
Is it? That's good.
And hopefully even better in September with us.
Yeah.
So, um, we are, like I said, working on manufacturer's day, uh, this year, we're working on the second annual North Judson Pitch Contest. Mary has been instrumental in securing a sponsorship this year. Last year, Kirk Herhagen put up ten thousand dollars for the pitch competition. This year, we have sponsorship and done fairly well. Um, when I leave here, I'm heading to North Judson to do an ask of the town for a little bit more sponsorship for that event that will be in October. We are also leading the charge on broadband in Stark County through partnerships with our E S C, so far broadband. And as more state federal attention is given to the importance and necessity of broadband throughout the county, there will be more funding. I'm hoping, my big push for the American relief money is for broadband. Um, and I know there will be other resources out there, um, for broadband. So the city of Knox, I spoke to the folks that, uh, want to do the infrastructure throughout the city, they are still waiting on some, um, broadband, uh. Phones or loops to be available for them to hook up the whole city to the infrastructure. So I'm excited about that and my husband can't wait till we switch internet providers to surf. Uh, we continue to manage the firewell for Stark County as well as the leak tracks for Stark County. Um, regarding the firewell, we still have a fifteen hundred dollar credit with K B R E M C. Uh, we work very closely with them and they have put us on a different, uh, billing situation. That should address, uh, high bills at the firewell. I reached out to Stark County Highway Department today for signage because we absolutely need to put signs on the outside and everywhere. All, all over the firewall buildings saying, do not use the firewall between hours of four and seven P M, because that is when, um, the bills will skyrocket. That's fire well, and I know if it's an emergency, there's nothing we can do about it, but for instance, our last bill was a hundred dollars. And they have been running before they switched our billing, um, structure, I guess, about three hundred and fifty dollars a month when nothing is happening. So now when nothing happens, they're in the neighborhood of a hundred dollars.
I need my correction to what I said this morning, um, that I, I thought it was, it was gonna be on the county roads. So if you do get signed, you'll have to pay for those, but we can pay for them out of the fire.
Through the firewall fund, perfect, that, and I reached out and hopefully it will.
Which it should never be used unless it's in an emergency, so.
Absolutely, that's exactly right. And so, you know, once a year they come and do an inspection, I will make sure and, well, we'll have sites posted, but, um, that nothing will happen and that, and plus it's an emergency.
Has there been any conversation with Norton about cost sharing?
No.
Cause I spoke, I spoke with them about it several months ago.
And, and I don't think that they would have a problem with it, I.
I know that.
While it's, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred dollars a month, that's still something.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's a lot better than the.
That's a lot better.
Fifteen hundred.
Hey Todd, Todd, I talked to Jim about it, I told him after we got through a few more of the improved billing. That we'll schedule a meeting with Norton, but I did talk to Jim Cook about.
Alright, good, okay, thanks Dave.
Did Dave wake everybody up?
I was really loud, Dave.
I know.
So, um, some of the things, so then, uh, so one of the things that we will start working on is our strategic plan. And this is, um, something that we were kind of advised to do. A barrier to a finer plan, though, is not knowing from year to year if you're going to be funded. So it's kind of difficult, we can come up with a plan, but, uh, it, it would make it a whole lot easier if, if we knew that there would be future funding. So that is something we're working on, we're also part of a six county ag initiative, um. And I have, uh, reached out to various folks throughout the county to be a part of that group. Um, Phil Woolery at Blue Extension helped me with that. So, um, that is, uh, you know, we're working to, uh, working on like clusters of agri-agriculture to, so that we don't have to. Send our, our products and our crops out, we, we want to be able to use them and make them here, make everything here. And, um, so we're working on that initiative with six other counties and we're also part of a ready grant in Northwest Indiana Forum. And that's about all I have for now.
That was a lot. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Hey Brad?
Yes, sir.
Um, did you say I was out earlier?
What's that?
Did you say I was too loud earlier?
She turned you down.
Ah, good, okay, so, um, if I could just interject, if you don't mind, two things. Um, number one, when it comes to the size of the board, um, I just want to remind the council that there are certain things that the commissioners have authority with, certain things that the council has authority. Anything that has to do with, you know, fiscal and spending, those are all council responsibilities. And so I think the council should take a minute and really think if that small intervention on the economic development board is compliant with what the consultant brought forth. I mean, that's a massive board, normally you have a smaller board and then you have breakout committees that handle certain things. And so you can still use the talent of these, you know, people that you say you need their collective talents together. Um, but that, I, I don't know if I've ever known such a large board and I meant to ask Rachel to talk to other counties to see what size the, the other counties have on their board. Um, and I, I don't know if I remember to do that. Um, and then the, the second thing that I was gonna, well, I'll let you digest that one first. I mean, does anybody on the council have any thoughts about the size of the board?
Dave, can I mention something? In the Thomas P Miller report, um, they did indicate that they thought our board was too large. And we have reduced our board from twenty-eight to twenty-three members, but there was nothing in the report that said it needs to be this number. So.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the council if they're comfortable with the number that you went down to. I don't feel it's, it's compliant with, you know, what the suggestion, but I'm just curious if anybody else has any thoughts about it.
Somebody will want to read it.
Well, I think board commissioners, even this morning, indicated that they do need to reduce some more and that's why they're looking at at-large members.
They recommended as we reduce the number of board members to limit our at-large and see and offer. And we have offered, um, members to be a part of our finance committee or our building and sites committee. And those are options too, I, I just don't want to make people feel like it's a slap in the face, well, we don't want you on our board, but if you want to be on a committee, here's this we can offer. So, um, and, and, you know, when we, I, we, our board makeup is made up of folks that we feel, um. Are important because of this expertise, so.
Do you, you, you're, you're working with a twenty-three member board now?
Yes.
Do you feel that the twen-, all twenty-three members put in, put in input to the meetings that, that they're, that you're getting?
I do not.
No, I don't want names.
I do not.
So my, my point is, do you feel like, you got a twenty-three member board, do you feel like eight or nine members is, are running, running the board?
Um, I.
Or ten or twelve?
I would say, I would say fifteen to sixteen have very good input. And one of the suggestions that I made to the commissioners was Don is actually an at-large member, but he is a county councillor. So, um, if we have two county council and one commissioner on our board, uh, maybe it doesn't have to be the at-large position. Maybe, um, you know, we could eliminate one at-large position and make Don, you know, or Brad or Kay.
Right.
Um, two of the members of the board instead of that at-large position.
Maybe something to think about is your mandatory members, your representatives from North Judson, Knox, Coontz Lake, Hamlet. People that need to be on the board to represent their communities.
Yes.
Think about how many at-larges you really need that are putting in positive input.
Right, and, and the unfortunate part is some of our representative members are actually the ones that are out of compliance with the tenants.
Right.
And, and I've gotten very nice yeses and no's saying, you know, if, if I can't be there in the future, I'll make sure somebody is there at my place and that's fine with us.
If they're not attending regularly, good chance that they're not real interested in you on the board probably.
Well, one issue I have is the meetings are at four o'clock in the afternoon. If we're trying to get business people in and getting them to attend, they're probably working at four o'clock.
Yeah.
And we, we can revisit our, uh, meeting time, I will say that attendance, since this, this year, our attendance has been better than it's ever been. We literally had three board members out of, out of compliance and that's it, out of twenty-three. So, and one of those fellows has left the board. So, you know, and I don't know, COVID may have something to do with that because now you can be at a meeting, be at a room, just like Dave, driving home from wherever he's coming home from. And that makes it a lot easier for people to attend.
Your board does have to pass an ordinance, though, if you.
There is.
Yeah. You know, if that's an ordinance, if you want to keep doing Zoom. Board, like if your board is continuing to do Zoom, you have to pass a resolution or ordinance to keep doing it.
Okay.
Would you have learned?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say that the, as a rule, the, the at-large members are much better participants in our activity and representing the. We have some very good representative members, but we've had several that just don't participate for one reason or another. And we try to shave off some of the at-large members, but we've been shaving off some of our more active members.
I had one other thing too, Brad, when there's a second.
Go ahead, Dave.
I, I think there's enough of the council, if not all the council, that's still curious as well about the activity that went on with Saber. And the donation of that property and how Knox stepped in and they accepted it when skill turned it down. I'd, I'd like to request an official statement from skill on why that property's bypassed, since it could have just been sold and then utilized to, you know, sus- sustain skill economically. Um, I, I think, I think I'm still aloof about that, I'd like to have a much better understanding on what, why went on, went on with that property.
Dave, would you like me to address that on behalf of skill or would you like to speak to someone? On this, I mean, I am on the skill board, but would you like to speak to someone, I mean, do you want to speak to Ron or would you like?
Well. I, I think, I think when we brought it up last time, it made you feel like we were putting you on the spot and we aren't. It's that we, we had been funding skill in the past, we fund economic development foundation. You know, like that was a real opportunity just to put some capital, like, one of the biggest things that still, and the economic development foundation have been so concerned about and, you know, and boisterous about is that you, you're lacking funding. And then you get a freebie fro-, and, and by the way, most of the effort from skill was put into welding, so I think Saber should have given it to skill. Or should have given it back to the foundation, but then, I, I, I feel, unless I'm speaking out of turns, please, somebody else on the council jump in. But I think that we're very concerned or just not understanding why maybe the foundation and skill would pass on that opportunity, at least to have the capital out of it if they sold it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will address it if, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, so, um. Skill was offered this Saber property. The Saber property has been for sale since Christmas at a cost of one point eight million dollars. There hasn't been a single bite on the property. Um, I in fact took Common Collaps there to, um, take a look at a building, they were looking at two buildings. They took, uh, type of construction with us and decided that it would cost three million dollars to, um, rehab two buildings to fit their needs. Which was absolutely cost prohibitive for them. Um, you know, we could, I was in a building, the one that's off of the, where the offices are, you can look up to the sky. There's bird crap everywhere and the ceiling's falling in and it was a mess, so. So I will say with the B and H building, which is now sold, you know, we kinda, um, lost our butts on it.
And we bought that though.
Right.
I was gonna say, aren't we talking?
Where they gave it to you, you could have just, you could have sold it for five dollars and you made money.
But here's the thing, it's been for sale.
Yeah, for a million. Could have sold it for a hundred thousand maybe?
Um, so we could have taken the gift, checked out how much it would cost to, we, we know we need at least probably four programs in there, less the, uh, auto tech program, which would stay out at the Skill Center. Um, we don't know what it would have cost to rehab the building for the Skill programs. We don't know if there will be future funding for Skill or the foundation.
You could have just took it and sold it.
And no rehab at all.
And not done anything to it.
Well, so I don't know when the city of Knox was offered the building. Nobody came to me and said, you know, if Skill isn't gonna take it, we'll give it to the city of Knox. I was not a part of that. I did not know that that was a thing.
Or was that even available that, in the deal, that if you took it, you could sell it? Or if you took it, you had to use it for?
Take it and sell it is the thing. I don't think you could be given, I don't think it could be given to you and then you turn around and immediately sell it. I don't know.
What would prevent anybody from selling anything they're given? That's the idea is you're recouping all the investment that you made on behalf of Saber with Skill, with all the welding programs and anything else. I still don't, I still don't get that. I didn't, it's just, this isn't against you, Lisa, but I have a real, the more and more I see this, I have a real problem with it. You could have sat on it. You could have sat on that property. You could have continued to market. I'm not so worried about Common Collabs, um, being able to go there. The Economic Development Foundation doesn't have to lay a red carpet for every company that wants to come to Knox. You know, I mean, there's, it, it takes investment on entrepreneurship to start a business, but at least you would have had ground. I mean, like Brad said, all property has value. And so that's the only reason why I've got a problem with it is that, you know, the Economic Development Foundation slash Skill could have sat on that property, even if they didn't sell it. I, I'm not saying that Skill should have moved there, but it has value. And it's just a shame, a real shame that that went the way it did.
We, so are you seeing, wouldn't we have to pay taxes on it if it was ours?
No.
We would not have to pay taxes on it. So all I know is it was offered to the city of Knox. They plan to use it for storage. They would like to put up a pop-up industry. I will continue to market the Saber property for that reason because my job is to help bring industry into the county, the city, the towns. Um, so I will continue to do that. Um, I don't, I, I know that it has a lot to do with the fact that we don't know if we're going to have funding any year. We don't know if Skill's going to have funding. So, you know, there's a lot of things that would, would, we're kind of against the idea of Skill taking over that whole property.
Well, can, can I ask a favor of Skill and Economic Development Foundation? Since like we're supposed to be also one of your anchor partners, is that if you ever get a sweetheart deal like that again, could you maybe recommend the county might possibly get involved in something like that? And the county, you know, be involved to do with the property? I mean, we probably could have, you know, helped you out or worked together in some way to, you know, not that the city isn't part of the, but let's just face it, it's a, it's a, you know, sub- entity. And, you know, we have, we have interest in that area as well. I mean, if, if you notice, we have a jail across the street, for example. So, um, we may have had interest in that property as well. So in the future, you know, as a, as a partner, you know, hopefully it looks more like a partnership when something like that comes up and maybe we get.
Certainly. Had I known that there was a different option beyond Skill, I would have brought it to the county's attention at that point.
And I, I want to interject something too, Dave and Lisa and everybody. Um, in the article, which this was the article that we KBI, it states that it was offered to Skill first.
Right.
And then the city took it. That, that is correct, right? We're not disputing that?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I thought there was some confusion about whether.
No, it was offered to Skill.
Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Brad, I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Donnie.
Just, uh, Lisa, not, not putting you under the gun or nothing, but who makes them decisions? Is there a couple guys or was it the whole board that, that the Skill will not take that? The board itself?
I'm the decision maker.
Who made the decision?
Can I say something?
Just one second. Rachel, Rachel, can you get those minutes for us for the council, please, and send it to all seven council?
The Skill board minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jan.
It was on Steve Adler, Jason Lewis. They offered it to the city without, it was college and had nothing to do with economic development or Skill or any of us. Steve Adler contacted the mayor. He's the owner of that building. It had nothing to do with us or.
That was after Skill said no, though?
Yeah. Well, no, he, Steve Adler talked to the mayor and said at the same time, and I know that because I, we have the same attorney, so I was a little bit involved in that. We weren't offered it that yet. Steve Adler did that so fast. The mayor said, give me a week to give you an answer. And it was gone. That had nothing to do with economic development or Skill. He moved that so fast because he wants to get rid of it for tax, for his taxes. He had to move that building down. Mayor said, give me five days. That was, we weren't involved in any of that. That's how it happened.
So, so it wasn't offered to Skill first like it says in the ad?
It was offered to Skill and the city at the same time.
Okay.
I can tell you that. I know Steve Adler.
That's not what it said.
It was offered at the same time. He's in Jersey. He was calling.
Well, that makes a little more sense that it was offered at the same time.
He was. He needs to.
Yeah, wait, do you have a conference call to hear you and you or what? I mean, I don't even see.
Hey Brad?
Have you ever met Steve Adler?
No.
He moves very aggressively.
Hey, hey Brad?
Yes, sir.
Hey Brad, I, I'm just gonna speak on my behalf then. That doesn't ease any of my pain. It, it's still being stated, it was offered to Skill. Skill still should have taken it. It had vowed, we and Skill and other entities put a lot of money into the welding program to support Saber. At one time, we had like two hundred jobs there and that was the thing, Skill, 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 welding, welding, welding. Skill should have taken it. And that's, and I'm just still standing there, I, even if some, if nobody else is with me.
I'm with you.
And I'd like to see those minutes still to see when that was decided. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, Brad. When you talk about let's work as partners, the city is really a partner, certainly a partner of the foundation. And I guess I don't feel bad at all that the city got it because they're gonna do something with it that's gonna be good for, for their community and the whole county communities. That's a partnership.
Hey, Larry, you can twist that all you want. I'm not trying to say anything against the city. I'm saying Skill should have taken. I'm not saying that the city got it. I make.
Skill didn't have the money to do the repairs or something that they needed.
Didn't need to.
But you didn't need to. You could have sold it.
Could have sold it, could have sat on it.
But nobody bought it in, in eight months.
That was a million dollars. You could have put it in the market for two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand.
That would have been some of their grant match. They could have used the money for that much.
The grant match wouldn't do that.
Okay, we'll still be money. Still money would have.
No, I mean, like you could use that money you, you got for selling it for your grant match. Sold it for two hundred thousand.
Thirty days to have an answer on the grant. You would have sold that building. If you'd been in the building, that would have been, was not going to cope. It was not going to be sold that quickly for the thirty days we had to answer the grant. I'm not saying that's supposed to be okay. I'm not saying that wouldn't be that. The time just went really quick.
Is there anything else for Lisa?
Yeah, how much, do you know offhand how much the city funds, like how much they pay toward economic development each time?
Yes, our contract with the county this year.
The city.
Our, you know, the city is sixty-five thousand dollars for this year. And we do, the last couple of years, we've done the same sort of thing, uh, where they say this is what we're gonna do next year and they didn't have a motion at the meeting. That's how it's been going the last few years. So, I mean, we, we hope that we're making an impact economically with our industries, with our jobs created, with our investments. The solar project at Bass Lake, um, will be up and going. And, uh, that will net the county a million dollars a year for fifteen years. And, um, hopefully, uh, the road to township will.
The, I mean, the council did put in the same exact amount this year for next year's budget for economic development, as long as the commissioners approve the contract.
Okay. One thing that I did suggest to the commissioners, um, in the past, there has been a Skill agreement and there has been a foundation agreement. And the council asked that we separate from Skill. So I, just made sense to me to go back to, to separate agreements, uh, in the future so that the money isn't just coming out of economic development money. Because those in the past had always been two separate, uh, arrangements or agreements.
It's not that one.
So how do we know how much we're gonna make? We don't.
Technically.
We don't know how much we're gonna make off solar because we haven't discussed debatements or anything.
Right. Well, based on the, um, the memorandum of understanding and the agreement that they have in their hand, uh, that was signed by the council, it, it should be in the neighborhood as long as they're creating the power that they said they were gonna create of a million dollars a year for fifteen years to Stark County in addition to, uh, debatement on the, um, personal property or on the, for the equipment, but not on the property.
Brad, Brad?
Yeah.
I, I just want to ask, like, Lisa, you're talking about the deal that the council put together, correct, with Marty? Or are you talking about something different that's coming in?
Oh, I talk about the deal, um, with the council and, uh, with, uh, G M, yeah, Mammoth Soul.
Well, what's called Stark LLC currently?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. I would say those numbers are, are in the ballpark. I just, when you said the Economic Development Foundation negotiated, I thought there was something in addition, um, that you were speaking of.
Now, the council negotiated with the solar developer.
Technically, technically, the county is not gonna get that money. What happens is the, uh, the rates, the tax rates in, in those districts go down.
Right.
So it's not like we're gonna get a million dollars.
No, actually, we are getting the money for the first one. That's why I wondered if it was a different one. We are getting economic development foundation, or not foundation, economic development money out of the LL Stark LLC deal. Yes, we are, actually.
Is there anything else for Lisa?
I'll come back next month and we can.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
That's gonna be short, right?
Travis, you have thirty-one seconds. Go. Twenty-five.
I'll bet the entire town would be upset.
Yeah, I know, right? Good time for me, though.
No.
Okay, so, uh, the reason for the meeting tonight, as you guys know, I don't, I'm a whole lot an expert, a whole lot of the thing. Um, but this is one of the things over the last few months, had specifically some paramedics leave our service. A lot of times it seems like it's coming back to pay. Um, I tried to compare, uh, the first page that you see there, I tried to compare, uh, other county services in our area and what they pay. For instance, Newton and Plasque County, I would say is more sizable for us. So if you look at their figures, they're about twenty-five to thirty percent, uh, higher than what we are waiting for. Uh, and keep in mind these figures at the top here are gross, uh, income. And, uh, so if you take out, you know, another fifty-four hundred dollars a year for, you know, your medical insurance, if you have a family, taxes, everything, take another ten grand off that, you got an EMT full-time making twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, part-time EMTs, we got making eleven eighty-eight. Uh, which again, I told the commissioners, and of course they put it up in the KBI, but, uh, I got a daughter making twelve something an hour at McDonald's. That's her first job at fifteen years old. But that's just the reality of things. Um, paramedics, uh, we look at those seventeen forty-three. We started out right around seventeen dollars when we first became a paramedic service, um, about ten years ago. I looked back and actually seen what I was hired in at. I was hired in at ten fourteen as a basic EMT and now we're only up to eleven eighty-eight again for most. Full-time do get a slight increase at twelve thirteen. Um, but you also gotta think, a lot of these people that are tiny tonight, uh, carry two to three jobs, work a hundred hours a week just to make ends meet. Uh, it is kind of a dying field and, uh, we're hoping to change something again. We got people leaving to go to these surrounding counties. We can't afford to lose more, uh, paramedics and EMTs. Um, continuing education wise, these people have to put up with, uh, quite a bit after hours. And Brad and Dave can kind of attest to that on fire card. They keep putting more responsibilities on EMTs with the shortage of paramedics. They're like, oh, hey, you're gonna use CPAS now. You're gonna do breathing treatments. You're gonna. So, uh, more responsibilities, more continuing education, about sixty hours. Uniform wise, these people behind me as well. Um, you know, we can, we have three thousand dollars to outfit fifty people, uh, per year. So you're looking at, you know, hey, I can give you a T-shirt. I can give you a polo, uh, something like that. There's not a lot. So what I'm saying is they'll go out, they'll purchase, you know, boots, pants. Um, you know, we got paramedics now that are also putting them in ERs, um, more or less in nursing positions. We're trying to do some stuff to offset, uh, what we bring in. So the commissioners did just approve, um, some increases in our wages. Uh, for instance, again, since I've been here, I don't have that happy with, with this. But, um, we're trying to kind of offset some of the things that have never been changed since I've been here. So the mileage rate's gonna increase from twelve fifty to fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, BLS emergencies, ALS level ones, treatment, no transport, we're increasing all those about twenty percent. Try to kind of make that sort of a loss revenue. We're also looking at AccuMed, a third-party billing company to hopefully bring in some more, uh, revenue and maybe not fill, uh, we did fill Mary Lynn's position, but maybe not fill Nancy's position that she currently moved up to and kind of move that towards a third-party billing that could hopefully bring in some more revenue there. Anyways, my proposal would be, um, and also if you see on that first page there, we're still not paying any holiday pay to any part-time employees. Um, I know I can't keep up with any type of private EMS services. You know, EMTs are gonna be making twenty bucks an hour, paramedics thirty plus. They offer incentive pays, bonuses, premiums, um, but we need to do something to keep our people. We need to be able to retain what we have and attract new people. So the second page there, um, again, is the twenty percent increase that you see I highlighted. Twenty-five percent, thirty percent, thirty percent would actually get us at, uh, or above that, uh, column all the way over to your right would be the increase that you would see per year. Uh, and again, part-time, we're looking at going from eleven eighty-eight for EMTs to fourteen fifty. Part-time paramedic will go from seventeen forty-three to nineteen fifty. I don't know if you got any comments, concerns? Also, I feel like there's been another thing, kind of some rumble around it. I have a few other people leaving. Um, again, a lot of it comes back to the pay. I feel like our equipment's pretty good. Uh, we have Lucas chest devices, uh, to do the CPR for you, that, you know, we're upgrading our cots. We're getting a lot of grants now. Again, I don't come to you guys too often, but we give that a problem here as far as the payers. So, any thoughts?
Well.
That's a shocker. But it was an eye-opener to me too, when people said, hey, check this county, this county, this county.
What, what did the commissioners, what did?
What?
What did the commissioners?
What did they approve? They approved the rate, what he's talk, he was talking about those rate increases, like what they charge.
They did not approve technically anything, since again, it has to be the.
Right, yeah.
For the record, I'm trying to get the commissioners to approve, um, holiday pay.
I never seen any questions.
They favored our rating increases that offsets some of our revenues. So if you look at eighteen, twenty percent, what we actually charge us.
I'm sure it'll be good, okay? It's not worth it.
So they just did the, the rating.
Where are we gonna get the money?
Rating increase on what you're charging clients.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So you know that I completely support all them guys out there. I worked with three foursome. The only problem I have is we just approved a budget not.
Right.
Yeah. An hour ago that now we would have to completely redo. If you can find money in your budget to do that, by all means.
Uh, I wish, I wish. But, you know, the struggle's real. We're looking at some different places. Again, if you do that AccuMed billing.
We went.
To take some money out of our budget, not filling.
We went to a billing company.
Yes.
On the fireside and it's made leaps and bounds of difference over what we were getting in return.
Right.
By doing it ourselves. Because they see that, they're gonna keep going after them because if they don't, they're not getting any money.
Exactly, yeah.
Where we just kinda, well, they're not gonna pay us, so we go to the next person.
I did get a nice powerful point from the AccuMed company. Um, and I sent it to Rachel. I can surely send it to you guys if she can, um, kind of explaining everything. It's what they would do. They would take five percent of our, uh, monthly income that they collect. So like you said, if they don't collect, they're not making money. Uh, they would take five percent of that.
Very much.
It can be considering what we collect eighty, ninety.
Very much.
See, ours is, they just.
Eighty-nine thousand per month is what we bring in, but they're gonna.
They charge, like what our bill is, they charge. They charge, like what our bill is, they charge on top of that for an administrative fee. And then they don't take any of the money that we in turn.
And honestly, nobody wants to see that for our community, but a lot of other county services do that, and fire departments now, that you're seeing. You know, I don't I don't want to as a taxpayer, charge them anymore, or have them get sued, or whatever, we're a little bit too lenient right now.
You can't sustain without.
You can't.
I'm sorry.
And again, we're looking at ways that we can offset, try to offset these costs that I'm talking about today. Or the new ambulance, everything doesn't seem cheap. Especially in a pandemic right now, we're paying more for masks, we're paying more for gloves, we're, you know. So we're trying here, but we do have a problem with, it is kind of a dying thing. Another thing about paramedics, too, a lot of them, you gotta do, you gotta have an associate's degree now, it's more of a license. And again, they're just putting more and more on the E M Ts. So Rachel had mentioned something about possibly skilled physician, they should be getting paid more. I wonder if we can elaborate more on that, or, sorry on the spot.
So. Our E R skilled part-time rate for office is over twelve dollars an hour. So like, we're not even paying our E M Ts office pay. And they have to be trained.
Right.
And and for the record, I mean, if you guys wanted to do like a public safety tax, that would fix this. It it's not, you don't have to raise taxes, you've moved tax rates around.
It would come out of, it would come out of the seat, it's still something.
Yeah, it would still draw from somewhere. Rachel, Rachel, where are we this year right now as far as income versus, you know, how far are we in the red right now? If you just look at the EMS, I'm just curious, like, what's the number? How close are we to breaking even right now with EMS today?
It could be over a million dollars again, with the other revenue possibly increasing. Will be over a million. I know we've added more with the traditional transfer units, but we did just take close to a hundred transfers just this last month, which is one of our highest ones ever. So we're definitely seeing, seeing towns back, we're gonna be where we were in two thousand eighteen. I think we broke a million dollars for the first time ever, which we should be definitely.
But but where are we against expenses? Like, how much are we in the red, though, even with the?
For the past couple of years, they have a one-point-four million dollar budget, and we have been only taking in about nine-hundred to eleven-hundred dollars a year.
Okay, so like, we need to work on that.
One-point-one million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, so now, you send people to collection and everything, who takes a spin on that?
So Jonathan O'Hara makes.
Oh, that's right, okay, all right, I remember that appeal.
And I.
Okay, I remember now.
And I suggested to Travis to go into a professional billing service, because these guys are professionals, that they can possibly make their revenue, you know.
Go by at least a quarter.
Blame it or pick it or anything, but, right, does a billing service, does it make more sense financially?
I would say so.
Looking at, again, hearing Brad's stories, I heard Kenny folks that not expire, they just switched to a billing company. And they're seeing like, seem like a fifty to seventy-five percent increase in what they're bringing in. And again, these people fight for the money, they're not gonna get paid unless, so we're looking at ways to try to, again.
That's, I mean.
But I, just trying to figure out a problem that we have now and how to fix it. Because again, I feel like we have a good group of people. You know, it's kind of some grumble, because a lot of the county's C P K has to pay and stuff throughout this last year, eighteen months, wherever you've been.
You can, that's still on the table, hazard pay for, from the ARBA funds.
Well, let 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 me ask, Travis, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, in the past, EMS services pay a a certain shift to pay, you know, when they're resting, and then a shift premium. When they're actually on an emergency call, does that, does that still happen in in programs? Or do people just get paid twenty bucks an hour, whether they're sleeping or eating, or whether they're out on a call? How how does it work mostly?
So I think most of the county services around us, I'm not sure, are private companies per se. I do have some people behind me that have worked for many private companies. But for the most part, it's gonna be straight pay, doesn't really matter what you're doing. There's, there's other things, again, trying to keep the continuing education going, we do a lot of training, trying to keep people always involved. But these people do work a lot of twenty-four-hour shifts and stuff, too, so you do have some downtime. As far as premiums go, private services, actually, they they will offer more of a premium, but I don't think there's any type of difference between.
Well, for some premiums, because it's a short minute, you can't get out.
Right.
So they're like, hey, we'll pay you thirty bucks an hour extra if you want this twelve-hour shift, but we got nobody.
Yeah, say if I have an.
Three hundred bucks, come out from the mill, work twelve hours, I get that all the time. On top of, hey, because we got nobody, we don't have any minutes.
And Michelle is speaking right now, the medic that we have in the county. And we have a few behind us that live in this county, that are gonna seek other work. And that's why I'm here, you know, so again, talk.
I'm from out of the county, but I'm a full-time paramedic here, as well as a full-time paramedic in our fire department. I can tell you from my experience, you're paid from the time you start to the time you end, there's no up-down, please just sleep, don't worry, take money, wait for you. And the other thing, I seen you shake your head when he said there's three thousand dollars for uniform budgets. On my fire department, part of my salary, I get two thousand dollars a year for uniforms. Think about it, if I get blood in my uniform, I have to get another uniform. My pants, we don't have washers, we don't have dryers, only my C P A does, I'm up to medical five of my breath. We don't have that option. I bring forty-five cents of clothes with me every day.
And our pants are a minimum of seventy bucks a pair.
Bloodline boots are a hundred.
Boots are a hundred plus, a hundred plus.
We get. Not much is changed.
So, so Travis, do any services use, Travis, do any services use a uniform company for that kind of thing? So that way the people aren't having to take the money out of their pockets?
Um, I mean, if we if we had more money in the budget, we could certainly visit that.
Well, no, I'm trying to figure this out here, we went from people not getting paid enough to they're spending too much out of their pocket for the uniforms.
Sorry for bringing that up as another. Yeah, just just something else they have to pay for, and they're already underpaid, and we don't offer it, is what I'm saying. But they do have like sentas and things like that that will come and pick up your uniforms. And honestly, like Jim Poe here with the maintenance department, he's expressed many times this frustration with it, because a lot of times you don't get what you pay for. And again, nobody wants to take nasty things home to their family, too. But that was just something I brought up as another added expense, it was kind of a bullet point to hit on.
Well, we should plan those kind of things, can you reach out to a few uniform companies so we can get a rough idea of what something like that costs? Because then we don't, then we don't have to buy so many uniforms out of their pocket and our pocket, let's see what it, let's see what it looks like.
Uniform company? It's two thousand dollars a year for like thirteen people.
I got a question, Travis. With with your transfer unit, you're running that five days a week, six days a week?
So we we try to run it seven, here lately, again, summer weekends, we're having some trouble staffing it on Saturdays and Sundays. It's definitely usually, they're on a transfer right now to South.
Okay, I got you.
So, yeah.
But here's my main question. Your rate, your transfer rate, okay, if, versus say Stark Memorial Hospital calls you guys for an emergency transfer, or, and, okay? Versus they call a private company for a transfer? What what's the rate difference? Who, how much, I'm gonna assume the private company's more money?
Oh, yeah.
A lot more money, I mean, what, what, how much more money?
Uh, well, when I was looking, and again, they didn't want to be mentioned necessarily, this being or tri-count.
I don't care, you don't need to mention.
So we're looking right here, we were twelve fifty mile, now we've increased to fifteen, they're gonna be forty bucks a mile. Just for instance, plus they're gonna have a base fee.
And they're collecting.
You know, let's say we're doing a thousand.
You're you're fifteen, you know, you're fifteen dollars a mile, and they're forty.
Yes. They're not necessarily collecting, because at the end of the day, you got Medicare and Medicaid that pay a flat rate regardless. But typically, they'll pay your mileage fee depending on where you're at. So again, we're looking at ways to make up this lost revenue, and hopefully.
Are you finding that, are they using because your rates are cheaper? I want them to, are you finding they're not, are they using you more because?
The hospital doesn't care.
Yeah, the hospital.
They don't care what you charge.
Well, you see my point, Brad.
I see exactly what you're saying, why are we at fifteen and they're at forty? That's a huge gap.
When I compared the rates again, I looked at these other counties again, versus the private. So they were right, fifteen-dollar a mile, so I compared it based off of other counties.
I mean, I don't know why anybody would would call somebody forty dollars an hour when he's gonna do it for fifteen, or a mile. I guess, I guess my point was, if that was bumped up some, and you could still maintain competitiveness, that would help generate some revenue for it. I wanna see these people make more money, too, we just as a council gotta figure out how to pay for it. I mean, please understand. Yeah, I mean.
I'm just showing you again.
The other, the other county employees, other than, have not had a raise in over two years.
Yeah.
So, I'm I'm all behind you. We just gotta figure out how to do it and be able to afford it.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to help, I'm trying to come up with ideas.
Yeah.
You know.
And that was one of my biggest ideas, that's why we started very shortly, Rachel had said, how we can make more money.
When you, when you raised the rates.
So we literally just did it last month, I finally got it locked into the system, we could have done it obviously last week. I just had to invest this start, start this little go, and then all that, at the first month, so we're gonna September first for the rate increases.
And let's, let's say that you, and again, this would be your decision, but Dave's talked about it, Brad's talked about it. If you went with a billing company. If that billing company could generate you. A substantial amount of flexure here that you're not getting now.
That's another avenue.
But don't forget, we do pay for some software that's supposed to help with that. Now, I I don't know if we're that far off, do you think we are, because that's the other thing to consider, with the tools we have. What's your estimate on that, Travis, or just a ballpark on your thoughts on how far off we could be? Because we do have software that's supposed to be tracking this.
Right, right, and we do get some denials, a little kickback, and they can fix it right away with the software. The software he's referring to is RevNet, it's eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars a month is what we pay for it, to have our ladies build in-house. So about ten grand a year, in other words, we're hoping to take towards that and not fill that other part-time position. Hopefully have thirty grand right off the bat to pay for a private billing company to do it at five percent, that's with a five-year contract. So.
I'm very optimistic that it, with your rate increases in the billing software, your revenues are gonna increase.
I think so.
Can you give us a month? Rachel and I were just talking about something on the side, about where we may be able to pull some money from.
Okay.
To do something. Is that? We're trying to get you some money. I just gotta, we have to figure out where we can get it from.
I mean, it's a matter of the budget.
Well, depending.
We're trying to figure out how to pay for it.
We, right, not today, that's what I mean.
Right. We we don't.
Maybe next month?
Right, and we're trying to brainstorm some more ideas, I've been bugging.
We don't wanna just, we just don't wanna say no tonight, we wanna, we wanna work with you guys, we're for you, we're not against you.
Can I have a motion to table it till next month?
I'll make a motion.
An emotion from Don. Second, you second that, Howard, second from Howard. All those in favor, signify bye. We'll try to find.
Yes, sir. Um, I just wanted to ask Rachel, Rachel, were you saying earlier that you thought that there was a tax solution that was outside our levy that we could look for? Or were you referring just to a a local income tax and doing a a public safety tax?
Outside our levy, it'd be you, yeah, you take a little bit from the seat it, and you make.
No, no, that's all I wanted to know, I thought for some reason that you might have said it was outside the levy, so, yeah, we're screwed. Yeah, there's, there's really no way to make that happen unless we had a levy thaw and raised our levy, but, okay, I was just curious.
I got some figures that the jail about the public safety tax, or local tax, wherever you guys call. Everybody's dead side against taxes and all this other stuff, but what it says, what it is intended for is just what these guys are asking for. It's for pay raise and get additional personnel, get equipment, you can take care of radio towers that we've been fighting for twenty-five years. It could give the jail staff an extra patrolman or extra jail staff or extra patrol cars, and we constantly gotta keep coming in here and grinding pennies to get them for. Now, granted, nobody wants to take their taxes raised, but I'm willing to pay what little bit the increase is to to secure these guys from leaving. And secure our people from leaving and go to other counties.
Can you get that information to him?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the 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 problem is, though, the the, it used to be low, it, now it's L I T. That's if we had additional levy, though, Bill, we don't have any surplus levy that's just sitting there.
Just come out of something else, right? The money comes from.
It's, it comes.
I'll I'll give you guys the figures, I mean, you guys are the financial board, you guys figure it out, but it is definitely an option, I think.
Percent?
Because we're not getting any better, and we're still at the same staff that we were twenty-five years ago. It's still the same radio problem.
And I'm gonna be honest, Bill, one of the things that I would like to see done with the, whatever that money's called, the four-point-four million, is to put up another eight-hundred tower.
I think we need to do a a study on it, because I think we need probably three towers, to be honest with you. And I'm not a radio expert, but this has been going on.
A tower's, a tower's gonna cost you five hundred thousand.
Yeah, so we, so we'd spend three, three, four, five.
I'm not trying to burst anybody's bubble about all the things that they've brought to the commissioners, but. A radio tower is going to help everybody in the county, not just Hamlet, not just Sampeer, not just Coonslake, not just Knox, it's gonna help everybody.
Well, and we do need to do a study, though, too, because we own two towers right now that were vacated, because our current vendor suggested to vacate those.
Okay. Thanks, Travis.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. I see that, you brought backup today. You gotta go? Oh, my. The one keeping us in order, and you're leaving. Okay, additional appropriation from jail seat it. That should be in front of you. We did, but we have to do an additional appropriation.
Has to be published.
All right. So I'll, I'll undertake a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve this, this is for a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
We have to do the additional appropriation first. Same thing. All right. I thought you had that in front of you.
I'll make a motion that we approve additional appropriations of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from Fund eleven fourteen jail seat.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Second by Howard. All those in favor, signify bye, because she said she's not doing another additional appropriation. Okay, Bill. I meant to get ahold of you, Dave, but I got tied up. Are you good with the one that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand? Yeah.
Well, there's, this has got an extended warranty on it, the one with one seventy-five. The other one wouldn't give us a bid, because we had to have a letter from the commissioners and the council, so they wouldn't even entertain a bid. The other one was two twenty-five, I think.
Yeah.
We're, I mean, we're okay with it, I mean.
It'll do the job you needed to do.
Yeah.
They did add two years onto the warranty, every last time it was two years, we're going to do four years. And then they also will come in and they're going to do a three-day training. But they're gonna do a three-day training. And they're actually wanting to come home tomorrow.
Okay. I'll undertake a motion to approve the purchase of the Tech eighty-four intercept whole-body module, your security scanning system.
Oh, we did that.
No, we didn't. No, because we only have bids.
I'm making a motion.
I have a motion from Howard, second, from Don.
Hey, Brad, discussion, I got a discussion, Brad.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, though, in the future, if you ever need a letter from the commissioners and the council to get a, you know, another qualified bid, please don't hesitate on that. We'll, we'll get somebody in there to sign the letter.
Time frame, you know, I mean.
I don't care, I don't care if the timeframe's twenty-four hours, please reach out to us, we will make that happen, if it saves the county money and gets you what you want.
And I'm guessing they were gonna be more conservative.
That's why we didn't.
Did you hear that, Dave? They started at two hundred and fifty thousand? The ones that wanted.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, then, I just wanna make sure in the future, though, like, don't feel like you're putting us out, we will get somebody in there.
All right, I have a motion to purchase the body scanner, and a second, all of the favors, signify bye. Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
It was brought to my attention that the property surrounding the jail is up for sale. Just so you, and by no means my pushing anything, but for future reference, if the county could purchase that.
What do they want for?
Don't quote me, and I don't want this anywhere, but I heard it was.
See anybody from the media here.
I heard it was eight thousand or me. But I don't know exactly how much it is, I can send you the email, somebody sent me an email regarding it. For future expansion out there, whether it's a juvenile delinquents place, medics.
Future expansion, period.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you decide to do, I think that would be a good thing to purchase, and.
How many acres?
I wanna say forty. I can give you all the information, but like I said, I just don't want it to get picked up from underneath us without us knowing, so.
That all you need, sir?
That all you need, sir?
I think they're picking you out.
No, he can stay all he wants.
No, I'm holding.
We might be staring at you earlier.
You need to get out of here. I brought my daughter for candy and she didn't even get it. She did it.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Surveyor, transfer request.
Hey Brad.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I don't think the surveyor's there, but I had spoken to Rachel about this one and just didn't feel like that was, you know, we usually have the rule about that. But I was aware though that, of what was going on with this, just that's why if anybody's wondering.
Oh.
Wait a minute, you signed it, Nate.
I did.
And I signed it right after you.
It's already binding.
Alright.
Basically, you guys don't read, but I click.
Correct.
I would think you have the, the A's first.
Yeah.
I don't even know what I handed him, cause I got it right here.
No, that's another, what? No, wait.
Right.
What did you hand him?
I don't know. I think you're signing the wrong stuff. Good thing there's nobody here.
Is that?
For how much?
Thirty-five. Yeah, oh, that's not all, thirty thousand.
We signed the wrong one. Hang in.
Boy, come on, Brad.
Okay.
This one makes sense.
The surveyor's transfer request. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer?
Yeah, I don't have that paperwork in front of me.
Here.
Okay.
I don't need it.
It's in your stack.
Yeah, I've got it.
Come on, you got it.
Do you need to understand? Did you want to transfer that?
I did have it, I think he took it.
I make a motion, you wanna see this done? I make a motion, we accept the surveyor's request.
I have a motion to approve their transfer request. A second, is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion, or, sorry. All those in favor, sing goodbye. They all left.
We're not even done yet.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to give the council a raise of fifty thousand a year since nobody's here.
I'm up for reelection. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote, man.
Alright. Additional appropriation to Cume Cap. Since two of us already signed it. I'll entertain a motion to approve a additional appropriation in Cume Cap of thirty thousand.
You have plenty of cash balance in there to take care of that.
When, when do we spend, when we spend it on that work?
Um, that's just kinda, so this year they spent a hundred and fourteen thousand on sidewalks. They spent twenty-seven thousand on the.
We already said, so, want me to make a motion?
Yeah, please, please do.
Make a motion to approve the.
Motion by Todd, second, second, second by Don. All those in favor, sing goodbye.
Aye.
And Don, you're the only one that didn't sign.
You guys are killing.
So it wasn't legal after all?
Alright, discussion on the upcoming Okra grant match, twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that you?
We were awarded twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Oprah, hundred thousand dollars to small businesses, hundred fifty thousand dollars to the food program. Um, and that was a back when we applied for it last year. I mean, that, that's a matching grant. So I need to know where to take the twenty-five thousand dollars from.
Take it from seated.
Yeah.
So I will do an additional appropriation to seat it for twenty-five thousand dollars for next month that you guys can approve.
Is that a motion, Dave?
If, if I'm allowed to make one from the, the phone, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can.
Technically, you really can't, so.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
I have.
No, that, it's.
How did I get to be the second in command of the EMA when I was on?
That was back when the public emergency was still in place. It's, it's technically, you can't anymore.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Todd.
Second.
Second by Howard. All those in favor, sing goodbye.
Aye.
Aye.
You have a statement to make.
I have a statement to make.
To the whole public that's here. So Kenny?
And why didn't you make one with more people there?
Brad wouldn't let me talk.
Yeah, there's a reason for that.
I would like to recognize and thank Black Book Coordinator and Deputy Auditor Suzanne Sims, Deputy Auditor Rebecca Wagner, Deputy Auditor Sarah Dingman. Human Resources Administrator and Deputy Auditor Wendy McIntyre and Paula Hunter from the Surveyor's Office for the endless hours they have given toward this most recent food voucher program that started last month. These individuals have taken hundreds of phone calls, prepared hundreds of vouchers and handed these vouchers out to the public. Right now, we're up to over twelve hundred that we're serving. Twelve hundred, twelve hundred phone calls, twelve hundred preparation of vouchers and also handing those vouchers out. So I'm sure you can imagine how much work this is.
So how does your office get anything else done?
We don't. Honestly, we haven't for the past two weeks.
And how long does this go on?
This, thankfully, it'll be done. We're handing out the next set of vouchers on Wednesday and September fifteenth will be the last set of vouchers, so.
So there will be three rounds.
There will be three rounds.
Well, thank you to all those ladies except for Wendy.
Oh my gosh.
Is there any other business to come before the council?
Brad, one real quick thing, sorry. Um, listen, on that note though, in the future, I think the council should make a recommendation though, if we ever get into a program like this or a, a situation. We can't do, I mean, technically that's almost borderline against the law to take the auditor's office off their primary function. So I think in the future. They're gonna have to do it, or, or their personnel, do that with the auditor's office. Auditor's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, those folks can't be doing stuff like that. Like, that's, that's just not good. That's not good use of their time. That's not what they're paid to do. Um, so I mean, we just need to plan better and maybe they'll work with us and, you know, collectively, maybe we come up with something better. Just my two cents.
Hey Dave, I was just talking to Rachel, uh, in the future, if we were to do something like that, we could write in the grant, somebody's. Hired to just take care of that.
Totally agree that.
It wasn't written in the grant this time.